We're gonna call the work session into order. First, on the schedule today, today is Monday, September 11th, 4:30 work session. I want to welcome everybody. Jay is not going to be here today, so I'll sit in for the work session for the first part. He will be back for the actual, our meeting, council meeting tonight. First on the agenda tonight for us, the work session is concerned is discussion of historic preservation ordinance, and that is Mr. Chris Williams.
Good afternoon, council. I believe y'all have been circulated a draft of a ordinance for Historic Preservation Commission for the City of Fairhope. And I just kinda want to take a step back and discuss kinda how we got here, just for reference. I believe the city's Historical Preservation Committee, largely using a state model ordinance, prepared a draft of a proposed ordinance for this council to consider. And so it was circulated to, I think, the mayor, council president Robinson, and myself to look at it and kind of see, first of all, if it complied with Alabama statute. And so we did go through it, and this is a, kind of a revised version based on the model. And so it's, I want to make sure we emphasize that this ordinance is based on a model put out by the state Historical Commission. And I don't think it, and I think y'all would probably agree, it's not a one-size-fits-all. And so the important aspects, I think, for us, for this discussion tonight, is to identify what parts of this potential ordinance y'all do like and want to see implemented, what parts you think are potentially problematic or challenging. And then, that was the reason, obviously, we're not putting this ordinance before you at the council meeting, but this is more of a discussion based on a draft, so we can go through and kind of figure out if this is a direction the council wants to take, which parts want to be kept, which parts want to be modified, narrowed, and that sort of thing. And then we would just go back and make sure it's tailored in accordance with the requirements of Alabama statute. So, as it's contemplated in this model ordinance, this would basically form a new commission, almost like a second planning commission, for lack of a better description, that I know all y'all can understand. It would have certain powers and authorities and make recommendations to council for some things, and then for other things, this commission would have unilateral authority without the say-so of city council. And so it's important for council to understand kind of the ins and outs and the interplay of which authority and which power and the processes from either a designation or designating historically significant property, or a building specifically, versus, once that designation is made, what can happen to that property or that district, or property in a district after that designation is made. And so, as it's contemplated in this, again, model ordinance, it would have a planning, a historical preservation commission, much like a planning commission. They would meet regularly, they would hold public meetings, there would need to be an agenda. I would suggest that the commission would be made of somewhere between seven to 13 members. The members you would want to make sure are qualified, and the state statute requires some experience in various fields of history, architecture, architectural history, urban planning, law, engineering, that sort of thing. But you want to have a body of individuals that are, have experience and the expertise to be able to serve on this commission. But I think there'd be some day-to-day aspects of the commission, at least as contemplated in this ordinance, that would require a staff person. And so coordinating, meeting space, obviously putting out the agenda, giving notice to public comment for owners and those that may be potentially impacted by, you know, a proposed designation, or a certificate of appropriateness, which is outlined in this ordinance. So, I guess, that's kind of a really broad overview, and we can go into the details, and it may be helpful, if y'all had a chance to review it, to kind of talk about some things you would like to see in it, or some things you are in favor of, and also some things that potentially are problematic or concerning to you, or some things that you would like to see potentially removed from a draft ordinance of this nature. And I'm happy to go through it piece by piece, or answer any questions, if that's what y'all would like as well. Council president Robinson is, we, I just met with him, actually. He had, he's gonna be back later, but he had to miss this meeting. A couple of his comments, primarily, just for the benefit of y'all. He wanted to make sure that, one of the fundamental driving forces behind this is to be able to offer some benefits and incentives to, from a tax benefit standpoint, potentially for a funding standpoint of helping to preserve some of these type of properties. And this ordinance would allow the city to potentially become a CLG, which is a certified local government under the state framework, and that would entitle certain tax benefits, potentially, as well as certain eligible federal funding. And so that was, you know, more of an, from an incentive, incentivize the preservation, less so on the restriction side, was one of council presidents Robinson's thoughts.
Yeah, I've read a little bit. Any comments, first of all, for anybody from the council, any questions?
I mean, I have several. I can ask one in particular.
Sure.
Under the maintenance provisions, and it says that the properties shall be kept in good order, can't have rotting wood, and who polices that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And because the importance is, you want to preserve it, but at some point, it's gonna become a nuisance or a problem if it's not fixed up. And so, under its current framework, you could have a combination of the city department, building department, building officials, but also you could potentially bring it before the commission as a body to review that, to make a determination that it is failing to be maintained adequately, and, but is entirely subjective. So I agree with the problems there.
But does that complaint get made by a citizen who says, "People next door to me have a historic home, and their paint's peeling, and I want to paint their house"?
Certainly open up that door.
It's one of those, it's difficult, you know. It's a really tough to decide, make somebody maintain their home.
Absolutely.
Their standard may not be as tight as the person who lives next door, so I don't know if there needs to be additional languages, or, you know, and also look at, you know, we want them kept up, but I look at the burden that it places on our employees, and how many people that may require us to employ additionally to enforce something such as that.
Certainly.
Just thoughts to that?
No, absolutely. I think it's a great point. And just, again, to reiterate, I mean, this was based on a model ordinance, so there is a lot of flexibility for this body to say, "We want this narrowed, we want this completely taken out," as long as it complies with the state requirements, and it also gets us the benefit of some of the tax incentives that we may be looking to.
Right.
It's certainly something we can consider, wholehearted, you know, wholesale revisions.
Yeah. One more question, Councilman Martin, for Chris. So, has the Historic Preservation Committee, have you looked at this draft yet? Have you guys been able to redline it and make comments to it?
In candor, I think the committee proposed a draft. I don't think they have seen what you are looking at today, although it is a large part based on the substance of what they suggested, which is, again, based on a state model ordinance. And so, we wanted to bring it before the council to have discussion, and then, and then we were certainly gonna kind of take it back, and obviously get their input. We haven't had staff at a high levels input either, in terms of the building department, planning and zoning, that sort of thing.
Sometimes it's good to see their redlines, because it's good to see what they're thinking, you know. You know, what did they strike out, or what did they put in that didn't make it to this draft?
Well, yeah, Jack, I think that was something that was presented to Chris and some others before. That was a generalized constitution, or bylaws, or ordinance, that was, like Chris said, from the state. And it went to some, some of the participants in the Historical Preservation Commission, or the Historical Preservation Committee. And they did do some things like that to get Chris started, and then Chris took it from there, and kind of put it to where it was legal, or what we thought was legal that wouldn't cause problems. So that was done. If you're asking for that, I don't know if Chris still has...
I don't know, but I wanted to say it was good to see.
That's right, but it was done.
When you, when you get redlined, you get thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, but it was done.
They have not seen this version, though. Now, again, I'd represent to them, and y'all, and I'm happy to, if council wants, we can discuss it and share it with them, but there are a, most of what was based in the model ordinance that they based it, is still in here, or refined somewhat to make sure it complied with Alabama statute.
I think the comments you made earlier from Councilman Robinson are kind of in line with what I remember from my time on, as serving as liaison for the Historic Preservation Committee. You know, the goal, to me, was to get us to the point of being a certified local government, so we had access to some of the tax benefits, trying to incentivize preservation. I was stopped short of wanting to be in the policing business, of trying to force people to do certain things, but very much a believer in historic preservation, if you can do it in a proactive, kind of incentivized way. I don't know what this would look like if you go out and do a survey of the community. I think that's the first step of the ordinance, would be to go do a survey of the community, of all the structures in the town. And I don't know, that time, if people would have an option to opt in as a historic property, or is the, is the committee then, or is the commission then designated the ability to say, "This is historic, this isn't, and then you have to comply with this, or you don't have to comply with this"? Like, what? And I guess that's what you're saying, we can...
We can fine-tune it.
Yeah.
And I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, I think, I think that kind of wraps.
But, the way it's currently contemplated, it would be a survey, not necessarily of the community, as in like, the community members input, but a survey of the buildings.
No, I'm talking about the survey of the properties.
Exactly. And that would largely be done by the commission, and once it's established, to identify existing, you know, homes or buildings or property on the national register, as well as other candidates, based on, you know. And that's kind of where the flexibility comes in, in terms of needing to establish bylaws and rules of what they're looking at, and there's some state modeled guidelines of what they should be looking at to determine what should be eligible. But ultimately, from the way it's contemplated, they would present that survey to this council. Council would then have the opportunity, have a public hearing, people could come in, property owners could come in, voice their opposition or objection, and then council could have the ability to enact and make certain districts historical, or certain buildings, based on the findings of the survey, and y'all's due diligence, after public hearing.
I guess the bottom line I have, it's always had, is money. When the government, whether it be us, or this, the point of committee is telling me, because I happened to have bought a house last year, and now they say it's a historical area, and that's gonna cost me 40% more to preserve it in a historical fashion, as opposed to tearing it down, I see a real problem with it. And the, just to make muddy up the water even more, I don't know of any other way to preserve historic buildings. So, you know, it's really, I've, I've talked to Amy a couple times about, you know, she's trying to be, meet up with me, and I have unfortunate times, they were there, but I wasn't. But the point being, I just have a real problem with making an individual who owns property today, and we enact the rules now, you know, yesterday, it cost extra, I could just tear the building down, or it cost X number of dollars to do it. Tomorrow, I still own the building, but now I'm one of the guys that I cannot tear it down, and I have to restore it. You know, I just think we need some help with that.
And certainly, there's two different, I guess, lenses to look, because you're absolutely right. That is a real practical problem that this council and the commission will have to find some way to address. You know, there's one set of properties that potentially would be having the first go-around of having these districts put in place, or these designations, right? And so then the question would be, do those property owners agree, and are they in support of it, or are they opposed to it? There's a second layer, though, that is a different question than what you asked, because after the designations are put in place, future buyers, or future investors, would come in knowing that this has been designated, right?
Correct.
And so they know, part of their cost-benefit analysis is taking that into consideration. And so, absolutely, the, probably more concern, and you'll probably hear more heartache and headaches from those that are opposed on the first level. The second level, if the property's already designated, you know, some of these buyers should know what is required, what the limitations are, that sort of thing, if there's an ordinance in place.
Well, in some cases, though, it could devalue the amount of property's worth, because I'm gonna have to spend more money on it.
Potentially.
So, once that's done, even though I've had it, you know, it's in, it's in effect for three years, five years, and now I want to sell it, it could devalue what it was. I mean, I'm, again, I'm just throwing this stuff out, as far as what I was thinking in terms, if I had something, I, everybody I've ever talked to, the banks, for instance, all the banks, if they buy a historical building to put an office in, they have to, under FICA regulation, they have to restore it. And every one of them told me how much it's cost, it's that much more money to restore it. And so, I don't know of any other way than restoring these older buildings, but to spend more money, you know, on them.
I can, I can speak firsthand to that, having...
It costs more money?
Having done that in downtown Fairhope, it did cost more money. And I think that, you know, and from a practical standpoint, a lot of times, what we're seeking is maintaining the aesthetic appearance of something in historic manner, and, you know, our bank building downtown is a historic building, and I'm glad that we renovated it and kept it in a historic manner. Something small, like the windows, you know, we had to spend a lot of money to keep the old windows in place, well, you know, they're not energy efficient, they leak all the time. You know, there's a lot of extra effort, but there wasn't really any benefit to that. I think we would be better off if we had been able to replace something like that. And then you get into the question of, are we really talking about maintaining historic, to what extent are we wanting to maintain the historic structure, or the appearance? Because, you know, the facade and things like that, like when you get to the K-1 Center, we're talking about doing a major renovation project there. I think the facade is the main thing that I think of when I'm driving down the street that we want to maintain, but from a functionality, once you get inside that building, I'm fine with that being more modernized to...
And Jimmy, I think, you know, me being on the back end of a lot of this, and my parents live in historical district down in Mobile, in DeTonte Square, you know, a lot of this determines, on the commission, how strict we want to be. I think this particular ordinance can be fluent in to what we want it to be, right? As far as those type of intimate details.
Yeah.
From what I understand, and talking to Skip and other people, you know, you don't have to be as rigid as a piece of paint is chipping, you know, it's a, you know, I think we can kind of pull that all in, and, and kind of, you know, not be so rigid, is the word, and be a little bit more malleable, and still keep a historic district, you know, in my due diligence. Is that not correct?
I think that is correct.
Right.
With the caveat that, you know, we can narrow and refine the ordinance, and obviously the commission can also have the ability to refine its bylaws and guidelines.
Right.
But what I would say is, from a legal perspective, if you're talking about legal restrictions on property rights...
No, 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 just, just infrastructure is what we're talking, or structure, like, instead of, like, can, could the Historical Commission say, "All right, you're buying this building"? And then there's another, does everybody have to have a plaque? Even though you're in historical district, because there's certain people in, in, in Mobile that are in historical districts, they buy old homes, but they don't receive the plaque. So, some of the things that are as conservative for others are not as conservative for them, because they don't have the plaque, the historical plaque, so there are certain things that they can get away with, potentially, that the people with a plaque cannot get away with. So those are some of the things that, you know, we can think about as well.
I think, for me, the whole key is, I would want a, if we're moving forward with this, I would want something less restrictive, but it's gotta be able to still qualify as a CLG, or else, you know, there's not really a benefit, I don't think, of doing this. So, we gotta get to that status, but don't want to control, because everybody in Fairhope that I've talked to, they seem to pretty much be in favor of this as it pertains to their neighbor.
Until it comes to, yeah.
And when it comes to their house, then it's a little, a little more of a gray area.
Yeah, it's all about neighbors.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Do you mind if I have some input? There's a few things, one thing, when we first started talking about the historic preservation ordinance, I've always been in favor of it. I think it's something that we should do, to try to preserve some historic properties in Fairhope. But, some things in this ordinance that do concern me, one, I think Councilman Burrell mentioned it, was the employees, having employed people to be able to help the commission, to take minutes, to send out notices, those kind of things. The other thing is, some of the financial obligations that this ordinance would put on the city, if you're acquiring property, or looking for maybe a site where you can move historic properties to, some of that kind of stuff, that concerns me. The other thing I think that we really have to look at is, you know, when we first started talking about it, I thought we were talking about something that would just create another layer of approval. If somebody was looking at historic property, they would have to go through, jump through some more hoops, maybe, get some education on what historic property meant, talk about tax credits, talk about things that they could do to possibly preserve, those kind of things, without going into a full-blown ordinance like this, that really does create almost a second planning commission, which concerns me. Also, it's hard enough to find planning commission members right now, to find seven to 13 people who want to serve on yet another commission, concerns me. But, with all that being said, I do think there's a way to organize this ordinance, where we could meet the requirements of a certified local government, and look to be able to do some of those tax incentives that people are looking for. But, again, I think some of this gives the commission a little too much power. I'm not sure that that's what they were asking for. I think this was a boilerplate, you know, boilerplate ordinance, simply some of the things that we get before, and that Marcus or Chris has to tweak for us, and make it, you know, fit Fairhope, tailored to Fairhope. But, I do think it's a good start, I think it's a good talk, you know, a good point for us to start talking about. But again, I do think that we probably need to take bits and pieces of this, but this as a whole, I would think that we need to be very cautious about passing.
And that would be the intent, for y'all to weigh in, and again, sections that you had problems with, or you disagreed with wholeheartedly, sections that you thought may be beneficial, or additional provisions you wanted to try to see incorporated. And certainly, we can talk to the committee as well, and get their, get their thoughts on kind of the key aspects of what they are hoping to accomplish with this, with this effort as well. Take a step back, just from the legal, and the ordinance, and the regulations, what are the big-picture goals that the committee is envisioning the commission would accomplish? And likewise, what is the big-picture goals of what the council would want to accomplish with something like this?
Well, Chris, I think we have some of the committee members here, if you guys don't mind, if, you know, if anybody wants to speak on it right now, and just get the public a little bit of what you were thinking, and...
I definitely think, I mean, I think the citizens would like something, and I know that this commission or committee has been working hard at this a long time.
Yeah, thank you for the work you have put in. I know y'all have been working very, very hard. Jimmy, you're right.
Hi, my name is Mara Hunter. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I am a co-chair on the committee, along with Gary Gover...
If you give your address and your name, your address...
Pardon, 356 Equity Street in Fairhope.
All right, thank you.
And I want to thank y'all so much for bringing this to the city council. We're very excited about this discussion. And I'm not sure that you are seeing the version that our committee prepared, and, so that being said, what I would like to say, that we have discussed, is trying to find the right balance that works for Fairhope, because we do hear people's concerns about individual property rights, and we definitely hear concerns, I'm, you know, we also live in Fairhope, and we have concerns about maintenance obligations. We understand all these things, and we would like a staff member, if the commission were to form, but we understand that that is out of our power, and that that is something for the city and the mayor to work out. So I really want to emphasize that we did not go into this with any hope or expectation of being a second planning commission, and instead, the draft and the goal that we worked toward was trying to find something that would create a commission only, and a commission has a lot of powers besides these oversight powers, and that includes education, that includes grants, that includes 501(c), or a nonprofit status, some things that our committee can't do. And so, what we really wanted to achieve was just something that would pass the state's approval for the incentives and the CLG, and these types of preservation funding programs that the city wants to achieve. Now, having said all that, we are not lawyers, and so we do need all this conversation with the lawyers to help us work out where that line is, in terms of where that balance is. So I just want to emphasize that, moving forward, we do hear all, you know, we don't, we hear lots of, we have had lots of points of input from people in Fairhope, and we attended a lot of the planning meetings also, that the planning commission held throughout the last few years. So, I guess I just want to end on that note, to say that we, we want to find something that works for everybody, and we don't want to be a second, we don't want a commission that's a second planning commission, not whatsoever, so. Does anybody want to add anything?
Go ahead, Skip.
Skip Jones, and I'm at 105 St. James. I just, I'm a little confused, because as a committee, we spent quite a few hours going through the model ordinance, and trying to get it to fit more what we thought would be appropriate for Fairhope, and I'm confused as to whether, Chris, did you look at the unedited ordinance, the model ordinance, or did you look at what we had created?
I looked at what was presented with your revisions.
Okay, thank you. Because, not only did our committee make quite a few revisions, but we also involved the building committee, building department, and the planning department, and they made their suggestions, which we incorporated too. So, this is not just a raw model from the state, we spent quite a bit of time working on it, and certainly think that it deserves a look from all of you all, and from Chris, to help make it better, but we spent a good bit of time trying to make it better, so I think we're partly, partway down that road, I'd like to think. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I don't think, if we misspoke, what we were saying is, the original, where you kind of grabbed the, the structure from, was from the state, and then you guys put a whole lot of work into it. So if we made that misspoke, and that you just grabbed it from the state, we apologize, but that's not what we were trying to say. We know you put a lot of work in it, and it was revised several times before you even gave it to Chris, so we thank you for all that you have done. I know one thing that, you know, when we first started talking about the historical preservation, and I've had several meetings with Skip and some of the ladies on the committee, one of the things that, that I was fighting for, that I wanted protection of some sort, even though we've only been here 126, 127 years, and a lot of people say, like, some of my constituents say, "That's not long enough to have a store," but by law, it's only 50 years, so that checks a box. But, what's happening around town, and, and the mayor, and you guys know this, you got people that are dropping pins on some of these older sites, in some of our older neighborhoods, and they come in, and the house is pristine, and they just come and just, boom, it's gone, you know. We had a situation where we had one of the first, I mean, a big, big, I know, history, you know, needs to be preserved, and Ms. Nancy Lewis, her home, even though it wasn't much of anything in some people's eyes, it was a tremendous historical site, because she was one of the first people that started building this place we call Fairhope. And, and you can go back and do your history on that story, but very vivid story, very, just a great story, and something that Fairhopians should be proud of. And now, we worked hard to get that to the state level, and now it would be archived nationally, but it would have been great if we could have saved that home, and had a site to transfer that home, like the mayor is talking about. But I think that's the spirit of it, is to protect what history we have in significance like that. You know, one of the first freed slaves here, that made a life for her and her family, and, and in other homes, that same week, I think we had three other homes, within that month, I would say, I don't know about the week, but within that month, three other homes that were built at the beginning of Fairhope were just gone, just like that. And we hadn't, we couldn't say anything, we couldn't stop them, you know. We tried, we put some work-stop orders to see if we had any legal constitution, but we didn't. And so I don't want us to lose that thought, as a council, of what our purpose. Our purpose really is not to armhole people as far as the color of their paint. Our purpose is to protect our citizenship and the history of our citizenship, and I think this is one way we can do it. Now, we may have to make some, some, you know, we have to model this thing, or mold this thing to what we want, but I believe that we can do it, because that's really the spirit of it, in my opinion. Anybody else got anything on this? Chris, are you, you're good?
Yeah, you know, I just want to add that this, this is very important to get right, and I'm glad we're not rushing through it and trying to adopt something before we're sure of what we're adopting. But, and I know we have a council liaison to the Historic Preservation Committee, but, you know, I feel like, I personally, this is just me talking, I don't know of anybody else, and that's why I'm bringing it up now, if you all feel like it, I feel like I need to learn a little more. I can, I can study this, but, you know, you guys probably... I can study this, but, you know, you guys probably have hundreds of hours invested in this, which you could impart that knowledge on me. And I don't know if we just need to have a special work session, just to, you know, one day have a two-hour session, three-hour session, something like that. I know that they may meet, but with our council liaison and staff, but if the council, you know, it has to be a public meeting if we have a forum of historic preservation or city council. Just throwing that out there to see if anybody has an interest in that, because that, I think that would help me, and it would also, you know, push the ball forward because I'm hearing, you know, maybe conflicting, not arguments, but just, I want to make sure that everything was placed in here that you thought was placed in there, and I want to hear the reasons why you thought it should be in there too, or taken out for that matter.
Certainly.
And it's, and I know it's very involved, and you can't get it done in a work session before a council meeting, when you have the time of it. Anybody else have an interest in that?
I would agree with that. And just to clarify, this is the, started as the standardized boilerplate language, but this has been modified, correct? This is the modified, marked-up version from, okay.
Correct. And again, wanting to kind of have y'all have the benefit of seeing the full version, so then we could narrow and refine it with, obviously with their input as well.
Yeah, so I think the thing that, since they have not seen this, me, they being the committee, apologize for that, since the historical committee has not seen, I think the thing that Jack is talking about is something that we can look into. It gives us a little bit of time to digest this and review it and go over it, and it gives the committee some time, since it hasn't not been presented to them, to digest it and review it. And then I think we can all come together in a kumbaya and see if we can get something done.
Absolutely. And if it's council direction, I'm happy to coordinate directly with them and send them the draft and have discussions with them, or however you want to direct me to proceed on that front.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's not a problem, but I would like to, like you said, to see their special work session. As I said, Amy and Gary have made valiant efforts trying to get ahold of me, and this would save a lot of time for them and everybody else to meet with all of us.
Right.
Have one time to go over all these with different ideas. But I will say, they have absolutely worked hard trying to get in touch with me.
Yeah.
On five different occasions, and unfortunately, just had to back out of all, every one of them.
Three weeks. Let's do two weeks. Yeah, like two, three weeks. You want to do three weeks? Let's do three weeks then. Everybody, three weeks, it's okay with everybody?
I think that's good.
Yeah.
And I can even send some of my red lines, if that would be helpful, to them so they can see some of the changes that were made as well.
Right, that'd be excellent. I mean, because that way they see your thought process and why, why it doesn't look like maybe what they thought it should look like.
Sure.
There was a legal precedent or something.
Well, yeah, it has, yeah, that's why. Yeah, it's a legal thing. Okay, all right. Anybody else, as far as historical preservation? We're gonna, that's it? Okay, we'll move on to item number two. You're welcome, Chris. Thank you. Utilities, budget discussion, and capital improvements.
Mayor, do you want to start, or you? Okay, all right. So you have some packets there, but you also have, that was presented there, you also have a complete budget book for y'all to review. And that way, y'all have opportunity in the next week or so to ask any additional questions. But tonight's discussion is for the utilities. We've had meetings with all of y'all to go over, you know, in-depth conversation. What I have here, I have a PowerPoint, and just to be able to go through each utility infrastructure, so you'll be able to see the, these are the big numbers that we're seeing. And gas, you'll see there for infrastructure of spending this year is almost $4.5 million. What you've had a lot of information on, I understand, for several years on this cast iron replacement. And so in this next coming year is to start on Phase One of SITS, and that's $2.5 million. And then also, there's additional engineering in there of a half a million dollars. Next is creek crossing. I know that's been, come up for the past several years in the budget, and so now it's being rolled forward. And so the total of 360,000. Nets and meters and regulators, a half a million dollars, and then some additional upgrades of 600,000. Do you have any questions on these? And then the superintendents are here if you have additional questions that, on any of these infrastructures.
Where are those numbers? When I'm looking at this page, Kim, where are those numbers on this sheet?
So on the large sheets, you want to open up, and the first packet is vehicles, the second one is capital improvements, but in, if you get to your very last packet of the large sheets, you'll see gas first, and that's where, that's where these numbers are coming from. We just summarized in this PowerPoint of the infrastructure that's being done.
I see the answer. It's rolled into the 4.463 on that page.
Yes, yes.
See it now.
Anyway, it's a lot of information in those packets. It's going to be the very last big packet.
Just out of curiosity, do you have a number on the various infrastructure projects we've done the last year or two up till now? Because I know we've been, I mean, we've got a lot being proposed, but we've also been doing a lot the last couple of years.
I do not have, I do not have those totals. I can, I can get those for you. Now, in gas, it hasn't been a lot. I know in gas, it's been a lot of just planning and probably more maintenance. Yes, please.
Where's the 630?
On the last page of this packet, you'll see what was budgeted last year in these departments.
Yeah. How much of that's carrying forward? I want to, 32 million in projects last year?
What you're seeing in total for last year, what we're rolling over into this year is 15 million in projects that did not get completed this year as an estimate.
Okay, so about 16 of the 32, or 17?
That's for all of them, isn't it?
Yeah, that's collectively, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, that's collectively. Do y'all have any questions for Wes, while he's up here?
I do. I have a quick question for you, Wes.
Yes.
On the, I'm kind of looking out to 2025 and 2026, and I'll just, I'll just use FY2025 for an example, the reserve for system upgrades, very similar to the number that we have in this year's budget. But in this 4.463 million this year, there, there's a lot of rollovers of the creek crossings and whatnot that Dick Hill mentioned on the slide. On the, on FY2025 of that 4.481 million, are we going to see a lot of crossings, or are we going to have more of that put in there for cast iron replacement? Like, for instance, would that be a Phase Two only, or Phase Two and Three?
So it's a six-year, when we're talking strictly cast iron, it's a six-year phased project. And so in the five-year plan that was submitted today, so every year, you see a phase, and then you see the additional things that we would like to do as a department in addition to that, because there's system upgrades that we need in addition to cast iron, and so you'll see those spelled out. But our main focus over the next six years, to be completely honest with you, is cast iron replacement. We've got to get it out of the ground. It's something that's federally mandated for us to do, and so it's public enemy number one. It's the elephant in the room. It's something that we have to get out of the ground, but we have to address other things in our system. And so, and you see in there that these creek crossings have been a reoccurring thing for three years. And I sat down with the mayor, and I said, this year for us, and you can see in there, is to clean up all of the things that have been rollovers. And I said to the point that if we don't get it this year, don't approve it next year. Because if it hadn't been important enough for us for the last four years, then we need to reassess our priorities. Because we are going to make it a point to get these things that have been perpetually rolled over from year to year cleaned up in the budget. And that's, that's what we're going to do as we roll out Phase One. We're easing into cast iron. If you, if you look at, if you look at Year One, it's considerably less than it is in Year Two. We're kind of easing our way into it. We didn't want to jump in there, take a big bite of this thing and not be able to complete it within a year. Because once you start overlapping years with phases, then it gets real convoluted with days worked, calendar years, budget years, all of those things start to, start to get real messed up.
Now, Wes, if you put in there six years, are you going to put in there two and a half million a year? And that equals?
It's not exactly two and a half million dollars a year. You'll see.
Well, it's just for, just for this conversation, roughly two and a half. I mean.
Roughly, I would say probably, if I had to average it out, it's probably somewhere around three and a quarter.
For six years?
For six years, yes, sir.
That comes out a lot more than 15 million.
It's 18 million, $20,000.
When this came to my attention, holly, Wes, like, seven or eight years ago, and the Cannon administration was talking about the cast iron replacement, and the estimates then were, I want to say, four and a half million to replace all of it.
How many years ago was this?
About eight years ago.
Well, and it didn't go up that much from then.
Fifty percent ago.
Only eight?
And I don't know where that number came from. I wasn't.
But it doesn't matter if it went 100% up. We're at 400% of that number now. That's why I'm asking. Why is the estimate going up 400% in eight?
Well, I'll tell you, my opinion of the answer to that is you didn't have a right number.
That's kind of what I wanted.
Because it's impossible to get 17 miles of cast iron out of the ground for $4 million if it was on a county road somewhere. Like, it's, like, everybody knows it's in the worst place it could possibly be for getting it out of the ground. But if it was on a county road in the middle of nowhere, you couldn't get 17 miles out of the ground for $4 million. So I don't know where the $4.5 million number came from. It didn't come from me, but it wasn't a right number to build off of to begin with. So it's not fair to say that it went up that much. It did, and it's continually, if we don't do it this year, it'll go up that much more.
Well, I worried that the 18 was going to turn into 6.
But that $4.5 million wasn't a right number. I'd like to have it, that number, but it's not.
So Wes, when you say additional, this, the million dollars additional, is that just like the rectifiers, little stuff like that, is the 600 and 3,000? I'm not finding it anywhere.
So you've got the recti, so the additional money is in, so what you see there, that money's going to be in, that I-10 job is going to be built into that far, that's hard for me to see. I'm getting old. There we go. Oh, there we go. I'm just not looking in the right spot. So yeah, so there's several things built into that. So that $130,000 for the I-10 job, so basically, that's our six-inch cast, our six-inch cathodically protected steel line that is essentially the carotid artery coming to Fairhope from our transmission gate in Baymanet, replacing that line under there. That's the engineering for that. That's built into there. The $75,000 for the additional rectifiers built in there, and, let me go through.
630 is on, yeah. Might be the 500, no, that's too much. On-call, the 200?
So the $200,000 on-call contract is built in there. Um, let's see here.
Okay. Is that number in there? About 43. The other engineering cost, the 43 maybe?
Yes, so that's separate, that's not in that, it's not in that 603.
No worries, but so, it's just, so you just, anything engineering, little stuff like that, you just decided to put it as additional?
That's correct.
Is one item out in your F-16 section? It's just not on first session.
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking for it, that's what I was looking for.
In your F-16, Council Mark, in your book.
Oh, in my book?
In your book.
Oh, wow, okay.
You can jump out there.
Okay, thank you.
And meters and regulators is pretty self-explanatory. It's just the cost of doing business. That's the, essentially, that's the most expensive items that we have for capital every year that are reoccurring to ensure that we can deliver service to customers. The creek crossings are cleanup stuff. The meat of this is in that far left, far-left box with the cast iron replacement.
So we'll start Phase One this, this year, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And we'll do yearly intervals?
Yearly intervals of each phase. And our goal is this, is to not have a phase take an entire year. But we're building, we're building these to coincide with the fiscal year budgets so that we've got time to kind of sit back, do the project, do the phase, assess everything, make sure that engineering for the next phase is, is in order. And then, because it's all done, but I mean, when you get out there and you start putting pipe in the ground, you run into issues that you didn't expect to have, and that way that we're ready so that when the next budget year rolls over, we roll in and we start Phase Two. And we roll Phase, Phase One through Six, and then we look up six years from now on something that we've been talking about for the last, I mean, since the number of 4.5 million was tossed around, we don't have any cast iron in our system anymore. And we're not talking about it, we're getting it out of the ground.
I got an email pulled up right here from October 26, 2016. It's a seven, a little less than seven years ago. We're talking about some rates to generate $300,000 a year to offset the cost of cast iron replacement.
Yeah.
So they're only 300,000 a year, and there's a deadline on that. I mean, it wasn't to 300,000 a year to infinity. It was, when is the deadline? What's that year?
2040.
2040. So at that time, 24 years max, right? They say they were going to do that every year for 24 years? That'd give me some number. 7.2 million in 26. And, I'm sorry, in 2016, they were estimating 7.2 million if they were generating 300,000 a year for 24 years.
And that's, that's, it's conceivable. I don't know that it's, I don't, I don't know how accurate it is, but it's conceivable. But I can, I can tell you that.
My first mention of it is because I found it in 2013. I'll get with Lisa later to see, it's for my own.
Yeah, and so that's how long we've been talking about this, but.
I know there was a 4.5 million, so maybe we were just, you know, giving numbers, but even if it's 7.2 million in 2016, it's gone up 150% since then, or what they were telling us it would be.
All right, thanks, Wes. Anybody else on capital improvement? Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
And next, we'll go to electric. So on that same, on that same big, large sheet, will be the detail of electric. We summarized it on this, on this PowerPoint, total of the SITS, .42 million. We're going to do the 44 KV line, which is 1.9 million. Underground electric, Magnolia from Church to Bancroft for future upgrades, 1.5 million. AMI system project, that's installing a new meter system, that's 2.2 million. And then we have additional upgrades, that is 778 and 500,000. And so the detail of those totals are on this large sheet that says system improvements. Do you have any questions on those? And Ben here?
One thing I would like to clarify, because on the council agenda tonight, there is some underground work for $295,000, I think it is. That is not all encompassing on that 1.5 million. There's other work that has to be done in there between Magnolia or Magnolia. There's other work that has to be done in there between Magnolia, or Magnolia between Church and Bancroft. So just, I just want to make sure that was clear.
So you're saying that's not in this number? It is in that number, all right.
So the 44 is a rollover. That's that loop we've all talked about. And that's the engineering fees added into it, so it's 1.7. We're still waiting to get a, get a bid packet out on that. They're still working on it. Uh, that number hopefully will come in smaller than that. That's just what they've, and that's, that's a big project. That's a lot of poles, just, just the project we did, y'all allowed to skip the weather still poles just for the di-road project. That was, they're right at $90,000. So these poles are a lot bigger and they're going to have a lot more. I think it was.
Thirty-seven poles, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight poles just on that project. So material alone is going to be a big, big part of that one. But it's something we've got to do. I mean, we've, we've spent all this money on new, new substations. We've got to get some redundancy in our system. And that's, that's one way to do it.
Yeah. Do we get any, um, speaking of redundancy and resilience, do we get any grant monies? Nothing that we've, okay. I mean, because I would think that would go into resilience.
There, and there is, and there's, um, there's a specific grant we've been looking at. It's called Building Resilience in Communities Grant. Um, they give out one per state. We have talked about looking at that specifically for possibly like the fruit and nut area, some underground in that area. We haven't really ever looked at it for substations. It's been available for a while now, but again, it's pretty competitive.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, Council? As far as electric is concerned?
Thank you.
Pretty straightforward. Thanks, Ben.
Okay, the ne- the next one is water. There's a lot of, um, a lot of improvements on this, on this budget. Um, the total for water is 18.6 million dollars. Um, water main upgrades, $5 million, um, going from 32 to Fairup Avenue, in, which will increase water capacity. Um, water treatment plant upgrades, um, plant number three, 3.5 million. Plant number one, um, 4.5 million. Next, the water treatment expansion, um, 2 million, that's at plant, um, three. Water distribution main, um, that's 1,350,000 to replace and upsize. Um, water plant and well upgrades, um, that's 800,000. And then we have additional upgrades and improvements of 1,450,000. And that's doing water tanks, meters, valves, and taps. Um, and then on your sheet, we'll have more detail on that. And do you have any questions? Darryl could come up and answer.
Yeah, there's a, there's one on here's agenda as well as for us to well. Is that in here, the 23?
That is included in this budget as well, yes, sir. And that is, um, I think Councilmember Earl had alluded to that at one point. That is looking at a possible expansion of well fill number one. Um, and that is to do also some test, some test bores in other areas to look at for aquifers and other potential sites for wells. So, but all that's included in this upcoming budget.
My other brother, Darryl.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, Darryl?
Good, how are you doing?
Yes, sir. You'd like to say anything?
Uh, not unless you guys have, have any questions.
Do we have any questions for Darryl?
A lot of projects.
Lot of projects.
I just want to go on record as saying that some of this wastewater treatment plant upgrades, I'm opposed to some of the expenses. I, I don't think they're necessary.
Yeah, well.
But the Warren, the over control and, uh, you know, the headworks, I think we need to take a real close look at that before we spend $7 million for headworks upgrades.
We haven't got to that, that's, is that, I don't think that's in. Yeah, that's not in here. Okay, I got you.
I'm still looking up the other.
Yeah, no worries, yeah, yeah, um.
Ready to look at, um, you stay up here.
Just go ahead and go to wastewater, I guess.
So wastewater department infrastructure, 13.2 million. We have, um, force main upgrades. Um, we have 4,375. These are projects that are needed to hook to the projects that were being paid through Restore. If I said that right?
Correct, yep.
Um, we have 3,688 for Bishop, um, it's from Bishop, Fairup Avenue to a new lift station that's on 101, um, excuse me, 181 and 104 lift station. Um, next category is generators and bypass pumps, a million dollars, um, that we're looking at a grant from Restore for those, um, pumps and generators. We have the headwork project, which is 2 million in Phase One. Um, and we have a grant awarded that is 1.5 million of that, um, for that project. And then we have another generator grant of a million dollars that is, um, a hazard mitigation, and that is a 90/10 match. And then the other categories is, um, other facility upgrades and improvements is 1,144,500. Um, so if, do you have any questions for the wastewater?
Yeah, I mean, where are we as far as the application, as far as what we looked at with ADAM as far as the gray water application? Are we starting that process or no?
Um, I think when you and I had talked, we talked about, um, the FEAB is going to apply for a grant.
Okay.
That will allow us, allow us to do a feasibility study. But they're, they're, they're working towards applying for that grant now.
But, so we have to do the feasibility before we apply?
We have to do the grant application before we do the feasibility study. Not unless you just want to pay for the feasibility study outright.
Yeah, um, well, really I'm talking about just to have the application to use it is what I'm speaking on. Not to the distribution part.
You can't, you can't do the permit until you can, you have a plan.
Until you have, that's what I'm asking.
Correct. You cannot do the permit until you have a plan.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So, okay, so yes, so I guess, I don't know, Council, that's something that we need to talk about. You know, there's a grant out there that we're looking at as far as the feasibility for using the gray water or separating those lines, um, to some of these places. Or can we, it's like $50,000. Or can we go ahead and get that done, um, if, if we have it financially to get that study done so we can get permitted to possibly be able to use this reused or reclaimed water, um, to save some of our drinking water? It's something we need to talk about.
Um, I'd be in favor of applying for the grant, just because I think it's a really, a long-term project either way. And I, I think, well, how long is the grant application? I mean, I guess I should ask that. Are we talking a couple of months? Are we talking a couple of years for 45,000?
Yeah, that's what we need to figure, that's, I don't know any of that information. But I know it's something that, um, um, that we really need to start looking into, um, as far as those type of answers and questions.
Yeah, and unfortunately Nicole's not here. She could probably address a lot of those questions. Or we can get, I can get FEAB to give us an update tomorrow. I can email and get an update on that and what those grant deadlines are.
Yeah, I don't know, Nigel, do you know the answer to that?
I don't. I think the, I think the probably correct answer would be that it would be just a grant, but probably several that we can probably pursue.
Yeah, but what's the time, what, what does that look like? Would it be before next summer?
It seems like, I would say, frankly, it seems like every, every other month, you know, it's putting out a massive call for proposals that would fit this, um, this heat. Um, and so there are some that we are looking at right now that even if we were to apply and it be successful, you know, we get the money, that money would not even be available till probably 2020, late 2024, maybe even 2025.
That's your answer right there. That's why I'm bringing this up. I mean, users' grant processes take forever, you know, um. But yeah, something that we really need to, to talk about and really to think about that, you know, um, in my opinion.
Councilmember Martin, I would convert some funds from that headwork project towards a study.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm going to tell you though, I, I think the outcome's going to show you that it takes 100 million dollars to distribute that affluent in any kind of way that is meaningful. Yeah, I, 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 you know, I didn't say it was cheap or a bit, but futuristically, it may be something that, that they could use going forward. But it's definitely a thought process that we need to think about as far as us.
It's a noble cause, and I don't mind studying it, but I just don't think you can redistribute that easily.
Well, you can. I teach my children that can't is a word that you should not use, but, but.
You can for 100 million, then, how about that?
Yeah, but what, what is it going to cost you in the long run if you're just thinking about, so we're just going to, so the thought process is to keep digging wells, which I understand, we have all this excess water, these aquifers under there that's going to last us, it's going to last our lifetime. But at some point, you got to start thinking about some past our lifetime, in my opinion, and people that's coming after us, you know? And I'm not going to get on a soapbox, but we've thought like this for many years. That's why we got bridges falling down right now. Because we said, we're just going to do it right now. And we don't want to spend that 100 million because we're just, when, 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 when they, they dehydrate and their tongues are stuck to the roof of their mouth, then, okay, now it's time to spend 100 million. But then it's too late. Instead of having a, a type of a forward-thinking process, even if it cannot happen today, we're showing the people that we're, we're thinking forward.
I'm thinking forward, like I don't want to bankrupt the city trying to reclaim.
Well, just to do a feasibility study, it's not going to bankrupt the city, but you'll dehydrate the city if you don't start thinking like this because those aquifers are not going to last forever, in my opinion. And I think it's unfair to the future if we don't do something thinking forward.
Would you like us to add $50,000 to professional services and we'll take 50,000 away from the headworks project? Be happy to do that.
But I really would, would, would like to, 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 to get that done and, and to, to, you know, to kind of think forward a little bit.
I, I, my forward thinking on that is make it potable water, which is better because you already have the distribution.
But, but we can't, we talked to ADAM, that's the problem. We, they, they're telling us that's not legal right now.
I talked to the federal authorities who, um, are over ADAM. Because this is being done around the country right now.
I don't have a problem with that, but when I spoke to the, the environmental, they certainly said that that wasn't, we weren't able to do that. Now, we could reuse it.
They're doing it.
I, I said the same thing, Jack, by Councilmember Earl, but, but I'm just telling you what the people that are in that position for local government told me directly and the mayor, so. Right, that's what, can't get a permit.
I push back on it. If we want to be forward-thinking, I start pushing back on that thought because, you know, talk about something that's old, that's, that's old thinking, ADAM. You need to wake up.
Well, but I, I don't really care if it's reused or potable. I just think there needs to be another thought process on how we're using our water as far as reusing it and wasting it is what I'm trying to tell you.
I'll put 50,000 in the budget to study that, Mayor.
Darryl?
Yes, sir. Do you have any more questions?
What do you think? No worries.
I don't want to give my opinion.
He's thinking, sure wishes he gets this money to do his project.
No doubt. So. Go ahead, Kim. No worries, dude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions on the infrastructure? I know it is, it is a lot. It is, it is a lot for the utilities. So, um, going, going back to, I don't know if you want to go over vehicles, if that was something, um, you know, that went into. Those aren't the big numbers, um, but we can go over the, um, the vehicles and equipment. Um, just, just, I'll just summarize. It's on this large sheet on vehicles on page two. We have for electric. Let's see this. Um, 500, $562,000 is, um, vehicles and equipment. Um, ga- gas just had one truck. It was 40, $47,000. And then water department, 171,000 in equipment. And then waste, wastewater, um, 787,000 in equipment. So I wasn't sure if you had any more questions on those.
Kim, no changes since we went over the budget the other day on that?
No, no changes, no changes. So, um, you'll have in your packet, I have, I have a summary for each utility. Um, and what I did on this, on this summary is I put what we have for this year's budget. And then I took the, um, each superintendent gave me their five-year plan. So that's where I have a column for projected for 25 and 26. So if we look at gas, um, looking at doing this infrastructure, um, we're going to have a, we'll have a deficit. And actually in cash for elec-, for, excuse me, for gas, um, are y'all on the sheet?
Where, where are you?
The gas somewhere.
This sheet?
Yes, yes. So the gas department, um, with being able to do all the infrastructures that they've, um, put in here.
Each ones.
Um, we're going to have a deficit when we back out the depreciation of, um, 2,588 as an estimate. And so I'm showing you the cash available, um, that you'll have cash available of 11 million. And so it'd be a recommendation that, um, you know, they'll be able to use their cash this coming year to cover those projects. Do you have any questions on that sheet?
So the 11 million.
They have 11 million cash today as a, as a.
That's in reserves.
Mm-hmm.
In our gas reserves.
Yep, and that's, so basically what you're saying, from reading this, we've got enough to cover all the gas projects.
For this year.
So.
And, and for, and for the next.
And for next, but it would be great if we had to, had that, like a progressive deduction, just to see what we're looking at. But basically, we've got the, uh, let's see, call it 6, 7.25, 7.5. So we, we've got enough and still have a, we could still have our 20% target reserve with a couple million to spare and fund all these projects through 26.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Through 26.
On the gas.
On the gas.
On the gas.
Do we get one like this for each one?
Yes, yes. You have a packet, you have a packet for each one. And in your packet for you to, you know, review, and all of this information is in the budget book that you have, the complete book. Um, but behind that is, you know, actually I do some projections all the way for five years. And then I have their detail, um, budget behind, that's behind that clip. Second one we can go to is electric, same, same summary, um, showing, um, where we are. And again, it's, it would be a recommendation that electric has, electric has enough cash to do their projects for this year, um, to be able to carry service. Now their reserve requirements, you know, is based, is based on twen-, you know, I've got an estimate out there, you know, it's based on 20% of their revenue. Um, so we're right there where we need to be at, you know, recommended reserves. But there is cash here, it'd bring the, bring the reserves down below the recommendation. But, um, we could be able to finish out this next year.
I'm okay with bringing the reserve down as opposed to borrowing money.
Yeah.
That's what it's there for.
We'd always, I mean, yeah, rainy day fund if there were a need beyond that, if there were true emergency. But I feel like, um, I would rather spend that money too than borrow it. So looking at that, you've got, you've got enough here to cover, cover the three years' worth for the electric department as well.
Yes.
About four and a half million worth of projects. That's what touches the reserve. No, I think it is.
That is, that is.
The 20% reserve, we're actually below the 20% reserve based on what you're showing in the cash reserve right now.
Mm-hmm. And, and that's just a recommendation.
We've got about four and a half million in projects and we've got about 5.6 million in cash.
Four, 5.6, 4.6, oh, 5.6, that's it.
And I said 4.5 in cash, that's, that's not right. We've got, uh, five, we basically are 100, we're 100% allocated if you spend your reserves.
Yes. And, and just remember, we are having a rate study done at this time. We just don't, you know, won't have those results back within a year. Yeah, so the first part of the year, we'll have some, I guess, preliminary, um, numbers. So that's not taken into consideration of any of those. Um, your next packet, if you have any more, unless you have any more questions for electric.
So the, so the targeted reserve fund amounts at the bottom of, of this sheet, that's a, that's a rolling number? That's not an annual number?
That is a rolling number, that is. That is a rolling number, that is correct, that's accumu- that's accumulated number, so it's based on your, your revenues, twenty percent of revenues.
That's cumulative, that's what I.
And, and that is just a target for you to be, the city does not have an official policy, that is just a target. Have any more questions?
Kim, on the electric, just to clarify, this target reserve fund at twenty percent at the bottom, you're saying we are using these four point six million dollars?
Yes. You would use your reserves to cover this year's capital improvements.
But, but so that's what's confusing me, at the end of twenty twenty-six, you still have, you have almost four point seven million in there. So, is that because you're adding back to it?
I'm just showing you what the, what it needs to be. That's all, that's accumulative, that's just accumulative to show you, this is what your targeted reserve.
Oh, it's not an actual number?
It's not an actual number, it's not an actual number, it's just a recommendation.
What is she doing? I don't know, she's, she's using false numbers. That's not an actual number.
That's just the target based on the revenue.
But that's not an actual?
That's not, the actual number is.
Four point four.
That's what, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, throwing me off too.
It's just, it's just a target for y'all to shoot for.
And we didn't make it, I got you.
And you want, you wanted reserve just because of vitality of our area and hurricanes and what cash that we'll need, you know.
Okay. Now, any other questions on electric, guys?
Okay, so next, I know we're push, push for time here too. Next is water and wastewater, I have it in one, one sheet as, as a summary, and this is the big one. So, I have showing for reserve for system upgrades for this coming year of thirty-one million dollars in, in improvements. I have in here to balance the budget as a placeholder for some type of funding of twenty-four point five million dollars. And that's, we, we have cash, but I have one month of paying out some things for this year, and just remember, we've already awarded fifteen million dollars in projects, that's been awarded, and those projects are being actively worked. So, with me putting, this is just my best guess of being able to put something in there that will need some type of funding, of some, of some sort.
So, Kim, are you, are you suggesting in twenty twenty-five, according to this sheet paper that I'm looking at, in twenty twenty-five, or FY twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, you're not showing any borrowing of funds in those two years? So, that's your projections?
This is just my best guess to get us through this year.
What I don't wanna do is see a twenty-four million next year, that, that, I mean, is your best guess that you're not gonna need to borrow it next year?
We will need to borrow.
We'll need twelve million, it looks like.
We'll need twelve million.
And then to?
And, and that, again, that goes back to, I still, I have on this, this meeting agenda is for a financial advisor to give y'all a professional opinion. I mean, I know, I know we use other consultants to give different professional opinions for different parts of the city business, and that would be a recommendation for me is to have, you know, a financial advisor to look and give y'all options that you need. And I know that's a big pill to swallow.
Basically, you're referring to options of how to pay in the money.
Yes.
Yes.
Pay the bills. Either a line of credit or?
I, I know, I'm in favor of doing a, as long of a term of line of credit as we can get, cuz I'm not entirely convinced that the weather and everything will cooperate to where we may come out a little bit, I mean, I'm thinking your projection's conservative, cuz I know how you, you operate, so this is probably conservative. We may actually come out better than what you're projecting, and would be nice to control that money. So, as, as we have monies coming in, I don't mind spending down to where we have a minimal amount in reserve before we're tapping into line of credit. And if we do it that way, we can certainly control that expense as much as possible.
When you say a minimal amount of reserve, right now, there, there.
But I'm saying why, well, right now, we've got, well, we've got some reserve, but I'm saying, why have hardly any reserve if you're having to borrow money for stuff, you might as well spend it all. If you're gonna have the line in place, you could borrow that for an emergency.
Right, so even if you put the five up there, you're still borrowing twenty or nineteen.
Yeah, but that's a timing.
Yeah, yeah, you're borrowing.
If you, it's just not, it's cash flow wise.
It's, it's not that much, but what I'm saying is, I'm not, we, we may not spend the entire thirty-one million worth of projects in this given year, and the money may be coming in to help offset some of that moving forward, so we may not ever get to a point where we're twenty-five tapped in year one. Like, I mean, that would be a, to me, that would be a worst ca- worst and best-case scenario, right? Where we've done thirty-one million, thirty-two million dollars worth of projects.
So, this thirty-one million, if I may, Kim, is for fiscal year, um, this next year. You're saying we'll spend thirty-one million on water?
Water and sewer.
And water and sewer.
That's water and sewer combined.
The question is, 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 is that feasible, that we'll be able to, to, to do that much work? Is, is what Jimmy's?
Well, I think it's gonna be, I think Darryl's gonna give it his hundred percent shot, and Mayor's gonna work on that.
But what's, but what's that look like, though, in, in reality?
If we can do it, that's great, but, but if we can't, then, then we, if we can't financially, we'll be ahead of what's being projected.
I get it. The question is, the rate, rate limit variable is, can we do it? Can we put our hands in the dirt, is what you're saying, right?
Well, I'm saying, that's why I want it on a line of credit, cuz that way, if we don't.
I got you.
We're covered on both sides.
You give back.
We, we're not spending the money until we, until we gotta spend the money.
Well, let's see, we, we approved the water well three years ago.
Right.
It's not completed. Wes said he's got rollovers in the gas park for the last three years. So, what do you think?
I don't, the pattern shows that it wouldn't, you know.
But you have awarded over fifteen million dollars in water and sewer projects, they are, they are coming in, they're coming in. So, the cash balance I'm giving you is of, as August thirty-first, I still have invoices to come in, in this next month, so that's reason, you know, we still have stuff coming, but I don't have the magic ball. I know, I don't have the magic ball to say if those projects are gonna be completed, I know there was material shortage, there was things that has slowed down these projects, but we, you know, but I am seeing, you know, invoices come through.
Well, I think that's two different conversations, whether the project's completed or whether we spend the money. Put the money out, that's the difference.
You're already, you're already obligated to.
You put the money out.
So, you got that much more to go.
Yeah, so.
And you gotta go, you've already started.
So, it really doesn't matter if they're completed or not.
Well, but you're not paying them upfront until, I mean, you're paying them as the work's being done.
I think it's more of a direction to give to Kim on how she's gonna pay these bills, either through a line of credit or through some form of a loan.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I would rather.
I would rather use a line of credit, cuz it gives you multiple options in order to.
I think you control.
If you don't use it, you don't need it, you haven't used it, if you do need it, it's there to use it, so it's the best option. So, I think she needs to start putting out these RFQs for.
So, just, just to be able to wrap up utilities, y'all have a lot of information, you have a lot of information. You have your budget books, we're hoping within this next two weeks, if y'all have any more questions, please come see me, see Mayor.
Hey, excuse me, guys, I see we got a lot of people in, so the conversation has to stop, I can't really hear. Okay, go ahead, Kim.
Just to be able to wrap up, I, I have one last sheet just for y'all to go through, it's just your debt schedule. You currently have your debt that has utilities in there, so y'all can look at that, it's also in your book. But anyway, we, you have your budget books, you have any more questions, we do hope to have this budget on the agenda in two weeks, so if we need to schedule another meeting, please get with Mayor.
I think the ultimate question from the council, are there gonna be any more significant changes that we, that we need to come by? I mean, you can let us know.
Unless, unless you have changes, unless you have changes.
Okay.
There's not any additional changes from when we have met individually or two by two to talk to y'all about the budget, there's no significant changes.
Very good. And I just, once again, wanna, wanna advocate for lowering that wastewater.
I, I, yeah.
To buy, buy that, that credit by three or four million.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we could.
There's only two million dollars in there for the Headworks project, and one point five of that is a grant.
Okay, and about a one point five, because some of that headworks is.
Yeah, so, so there's two million in the budget, and one point five of that is a grant, so.
Whatever, whatever's eliminated by the indoor odor assault treatment of that, I just think we can find a better way to do it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I like that we studied before we spent the money on that. Not, not saying we don't need to do something, but I think there's some more cost-effective ways to treat that.
I, I think when we were having budget discussions, one thing we talked about on the Headworks project is that it is being, and RFQs being put out, RFP, so y'all will handle that process the same as we do restore projects. We'll have engineers come in, they'll give some proposals, you'll have a chance to grade them, decide what you wanna do and move forward.
But with the budget that has the spending in there, I, I'm not, I'm not willing to, to, to commit a bunch of dollars, cuz when we put RFPs out, they're gonna, they're gonna go to exactly what we put in the budget plus temporary.
We also put that it was phased, so, I mean.
Duly noted, sir, Councilman Burrell. Anything else on the utilities? Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys, all right, we got a little bit more time. Let's go over the agenda, let's start doing the agendas. Any of our staff that has agenda items, five through sixteen, please come forward for the work session.
I, I have a couple of ones standing up here.
All right.
I had it marked on my sheet. Number thirteen, and this is, this is on the behalf of the HR department. We've tossed through this for the past couple of years, but it is actually, would be a third-party handling, the FMLA and the leave for employees that go out, and so that way, HR department will let this company know, and then they'll handle the paperwork for an employee that's out on leave.
Okay.
Is this necessary now?
It's, it's just a shortage in staff of trying to get the process done, and we, we. Yes, yes, it's staff and, and skill set.
And then, Jack, for, for that one in particular, you know, this is something that I think requires some oversight, and so with the HR turnover that we've had, just to make sure we're doing everything.
You wanna make sure you're dotting all the I's and crossing all the T's and that?
Yes.
Did you say that?
Yeah. And then, item number fourteen is what I have requested, y'all tabled it last time, and it's to have a financial advisor to look at the financing options for the utilities. And if y'all have any questions on that. And then, we didn't get into discussion on the work session also, that was about the unused sick leave.
That's what, that's the same, I was covering two birds with one stone, so is that the same conversation?
Yes, that is, that is the same conver- the same conversation, so you have an option that employee can take their unused sick leave and convert those hours, which actually converts to days, into their RSA. You can either have an employee have an option to pay, cash out their sick leave when they leave, or, it's not one, it's or, or they can take those hours, days, convert those into RSA credits.
Yeah, there's a couple of things on there that I saw that, so they can only take nine hundred and sixty hours, but it's unlimited sick leave time that they could save up, but they only get paid out or take nine sixty.
Nine sixty or ha- or depending on their tenure or half.
Or half, right. So, just to clarify that, okay, very good. All right, very good.
But that's not on the agenda for adoption tonight, right? That was just on the work session.
Just on the work session.
That was just on the work session.
Okay. All right. Anybody else, department heads, anything on the agenda, please come forward.
I'll try to be very quick. Item number seven, as you know, y'all authorized us to apply for a GOMESA grant through A-DAM, and we did receive it, that's gonna install fifteen litter interceptors within our existing drainage infrastructure and provide three years of maintenance, meaning collection and inventory of that. And this is just recognizing that award and authorizing the mayor to sign all the necessary paperwork, so we're excited about that. And then to revisit from last meeting, item number twelve, I, I kinda showed up without, without the whole backstory. What we are requesting here, we did go out and, and get quotes to replace the roof on the, the maintenance barn, which does definitely need it, and basically, the situation is, it is budgeted in the upcoming budget. We would like you to go ahead and authorize this, understanding that there would be no payout on it until the budget was passed, but since we've got the quotes in place and the barn does need to be re-roofed, we're asking for consideration of that tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Yep. So, right quick, Ian led a crew on the storm, he was gonna just give the council a quick update to come back last Friday, so.
Yep, just to give you an update, we made it home Friday from storm restoration in Florida. We were gone for eleven days, we pre-staged for the storm in Gainesville and spent two days there. Then we went to Central Florida Electric Co-op and worked for six days, we finished up at Tri-County Electric Co-op after three days. I feel like this was a good experience for our newer employees to work a storm while also helping others restore power. So, thanks Sheri and the council for allowing us to assist in other utilities. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Good job, guys.
So, I have number ten, it's one that we've talked about multiple times, so it's, we finally bid that out. It's Magnolia Underground Project, and we had one bid, three no bids, and this, this company's actually from Georgia that actually had this contract, so they're gonna be coming here from Georgia if it's awarded.
You know.
I just didn't have anybody local, little bid on it.
Right, and we bid this not to exceed a number. Well, we did not?
I, I, I don't like doing the not to exceed because you give them something to shoot at.
You said number ten, correct? Right. Ah, okay, so we didn't do it that way. I was about to give y'all, I was like, oh, Hercules, Hercules.
You're kinda referencing what Councilman Burrell would like to do, is if we have two million budget, if we say, this is all we have, tell us what you can give us for that number.
Right.
And that is something that we're looking at doing, yes.
I thought y'all did it, I was like.
We come, we come way under what, if we would've put what we had on there and what we've come out, we.
Right, I kinda see it like Ben's saying, is, you know, and I think we've had this discussion, you put a number out there, that's what they're gonna ask for, you know, tell them, you know, tell them what you can do for.
Well, unless it's competitive, if it's competitive and you say, what can you do for us, then you, you have a chance. If you have to select them and you give them a number, you're gonna get less.
That's a no-brainer, right, no doubt.
And then I can speak toward sixteen.
All right.
As everybody knows, we put in new pickleball courts at Quill Creek, and now, I guess it's such a big success, now they want lights out there. It's, so it's a budgeted item for twenty-four, it's ten to twelve weeks for the lights to come in.
Ten to twelve weeks.
Ten, twelve weeks, so it is gonna be budgeted in twenty-four, if we could just go ahead and allow us to get the procurement of the lights.
All right.
All that will be installed in-house, so we can do those polls.
I think they saw me and Councilman Conyers playing each other out there, and they're trying to set up a primetime showcase for us, so you gotta have lights.
You made a little bit of shorty hat on.
That's correct, yeah, goggles, the whole nine, we had it working.
So, that's, that's what that is. Any questions?
Well, you say that, it was in the budget, but it's not in the budget, neither was the roof at the golf course.
No, the roof was not in the budget.
The twenty-four, yeah.
I'm looking at the twenty-four budget.
It might not be on electrical now.
So, the roof came up last time, and it was not, it wasn't in the budget, the roof, we know the roof.
It's not, it's not in twenty-three's budget, it's in the twenty-four.
It's in twenty-four budget, okay, they did plan, okay. Okay, all right, Ben, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, you're gonna handle numbers eight and nine, I'm assuming you'll talk about those, okay? And let's see, eleven, who has, let's see?
We can, we can talk about that, that's, 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 Mayor can handle that too.
All right, and fifteen. All right, and 15.
Is Darryl in here? If not, Mayor can talk about that, too.
Yeah, 15, that'll be, Darryl, 15?
Yeah.
So, I've got item number 15 for Dan O'Donnell and Associates to drill a production well at treatment plant number one.
And this is just what the mayor was talking about earlier.
Right, and this is, this is just to do some test spores and to explore well field number one, that will execute a contract for the the hydrologic services, not to drill the well itself, but just to study it and to test it, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I call it PERC, is that what it pretty much, yeah, all right, very good. All right, any questions, council on that, anything on that?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl. And number 13, is that you, Mayor? Okay. All right, I think that's it. And number five, the big one, final adoption, you, we're.
Yeah, we can just talk about that.
Talk about that then, all right, all right, let's see. Any committee updates, guys? Let's cover the agenda. Councilor Burrell?
What was that?
Any committee updates?
Oh, no. No.
No, not this time.
All right, very good. All right. All right, that's it.